Twenty Town Planning Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening, especially like to welcome Bobby. Well, glad to see you back.
Thank you.
Would we please stand for the pledge of the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which is France, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Commission members should have received the draft minutes for March 27, 2017. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Aside from the...
The first one should be, name change on their attendance should be Archie to four. Is there any others?
I know.
I guess so.
Yeah, I think so.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then.
Is there a hyphen between them?
No.
Space.
I know.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All of those in favor of the amendment, thank you. The amendment to the minutes of March 27, think if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Carrie, thank you. First action item is Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan update. Is that Audrey Gerhard?
Gerhard.
Gerhard?
Yes.
Okay. You go ahead and start out and tell us a little about what we're doing and what you're asking for and why.
Sure. Sure, so every three years, we update and do a triennial update to the water and sewer master plan. I was before this body, probably about, our plan got adopted in 2014. Oh, okay, sorry. We do, just to start over, so anybody can hear me if they're listening, we do the triennial update every three years. Our last plan was adopted in 2014. We did start that process, though, in 2010. We had to go back and forth a lot with Maryland Department of the Environment. So, last time, we did it kinda, I always say like baptism by fire. When I was handed this assignment, my supervisor put in her two weeks' notice, and so it was, there you go. So this go around, instead of doing all the municipalities at one time, instead of every, all the mapping and all of the tabulations being done at the same time, each municipality got their own month. I could work with each municipality as much as they needed to for technical assistance. We could go back and forth with mapping, for tables, everything. This is a requirement from the state of Maryland. So, Tawnytown was given the month of February. We had gone back and forth, the staff and I, we met twice, and then we had gone, communicated through email, probably four or five times, to make sure that the document that you have in front of you is accurate and everybody is comfortable with it. Tawnytown was the one that probably would have taken the most revision from anyone, any of the other municipalities, because the last time we did this, the city was under a consent order from Maryland Department of the Environment. So since then, it has been lifted, so that gave us an opportunity to focus on new language that needed to be put within the document. So, everything, the water and sewer tables, chapter, everything, has been thoroughly vetted through, through the staff. Just wanted to point out the map. We have gone through and made sure that all of the infrastructure is correct. The only change that is from categories, so we have four different categories. Existing final planning is in the white, so anything that is currently served and hooked up today is in the white. In addition to that, you'll also see possibly some vacant parcels that are close to the city center that you would want to be hooked up eventually. So that's more like infill projects and things of that nature, but they still might look in the white color even though they might not have service today. You're gonna see like a, this darker blue color this year. That is our priority, that's zero to six years, and what that means is that they aren't hooked up today, but that is a priority area, meaning you want to focus your efforts in that area, or potentially you know of a project that's moving forward of that nature. The real only, and I'm sorry, we would have had regularly a much lighter color blue, which would be for future seven to 10, and it sounds awkward and awful when I say this, but Tawnytown doesn't have any future in the water service area.
I've heard that from other people.
You just didn't know anyone would be asking you to sign consistency.
I didn't think they would say it so bluntly, really.
Well, you know, I'm honest, and then you had this, and you might not be able to see where you're sitting, but lighter blue is hatched, and that's a long-range planning category, which means it is not within the next 10 years. Now, the way that came about is the last time we did this triennial update, and even beyond that, historically, our service areas were 30-year service areas, okay? We would have thing, properties in our service areas for a very long time and never really had to associate a timeframe with that. So the last time we did this, Maryland Department of the Environment said, "This is no longer the way you're allowed to do things. We want you to focus on 10 years. If you can't serve it in the next 10 years, we want it out of your service area." Well, we didn't find that to be very fair. We've had some of these properties in our service areas for more than 30 years. So with that, we created this new long-range category, and what that meant was that it is not going to be served in the next 10 years, but it's still planned for service. Anything in that, like, I guess like tanish taupe color, if you will, is no planned service. So if you're, anything within a blue or white on that, you are planned for service in some capacity. We just did a fall 2016 amendment to make the Evapco property into a priority category. It was previously in a long-range category, so on this map, you will see it in, as a, like the darker kind of blue color. That is the only property that has changed from our maps of three years ago. Everything else was a infrastructure change primarily, and there might have been like a little bit as far as like how we calculate our numbers. I know Meadow, is it Meadow Creek?
Meadow.
Meadow Brook, I'm so sorry. Some of the properties have come online, so instead of it being in our future calculations, we go ahead and put that into our existing flow numbers. You will see that on the back of the papers that you've received, on the very last page of all of them are your, this is one, on each water and sewer, Maryland Department of the Environment pays very close attention to these tables. This is what they really are looking at. So, the present year, the way we got that is that we looked at current flows. We were given that information from the city, and what that does is that it's broken down by both residential demand and commercial industrial demand. Moving on into the priority, just like I said, that priority is the zero to six. That includes any property that's in the, that blue, darker blue color, as well as any of those infill properties. So anybody in the white who is not currently hooked up. That would include also if you had someone in your service area that may have, be on well or septic. So that's where they would be calculated. If you look at your table throughout, because I said it had no future, you will see that the numbers didn't change. So, the same thing that is within priority is the same thing within future. The main goal of this table is to show that there is no deficit. It used to be, when we did water and sewer planning, you could show a deficit, and through adequate public facility ordinances and through different measures like that, if you didn't have the facility to serve them, or you didn't have the capacity, the project wouldn't move forward. That's no longer the case. Maryland Department of the Environment wants to see if a project is happening in the next 10 years, they want to see the capacity-adding project that goes along with it. So, they want to make sure, like I said, that everything balances and that there is no deficit. So, what I'm asking here today is that you find that this chapter is consistent with your master plan. Like I said, it has been vetted through the staff. If you look also, I believe in your sewer, if you look in the sewer, in the very last, actually, Henry, is the 25-year draft CIP, is that for both water and sewer? What we did is, we tried to incorporate projects also in that long-term recommendation section for both water and sewer. That would match with the draft 25-year CIP that the council has been looking at. So, and the reason for that being, is that Maryland Department of the Environment first looks at this document to make sure that it is somewhere within this document before they issue any kind of permits or anything like that. Long-range projects, we do say that it is beyond that 10-year scope that we're looking at, and also this, since this plan does happen every three years, it gives us an opportunity to reevaluate those long-term projects and see if either they're still necessary, or maybe some of the things have just already been completed. There's any other questions I can answer, or help answer, anyway?
Jim, is this consistent with our master plan?
This is, one thing that I guess I'd like to just emphasize was, as Andrea said, the state wants us to have the capacity-building projects lined up for something that's gonna be on the map for, within the next 10 years. That's why, last time around, we moved everything, basically, that wasn't already in the planning process, into that long-range area, and kind of why we had the scramble we did for the Evapco site, because we did not anticipate them coming to us that quickly to develop the site, so that's why we had to scramble to amend the, the plan, and that's why there's a, a comment in here about, about that shift and it causing, you know, potential delays for, for projects, so. And on that, I mean, the county really scrambled, just as much as the city, if not more, on the water sewer plan to make that happen for Evapco, but just wanted to emphasize that, that shift from the future to the long, long range.
And one of the other things that I, I don't think that I said, but I just want to make sure everyone knows, so in order to hook up today, a property needs to be in the existing final planning, either that white category or the dark blue, the priority. If you're in future or long range, you do not have the ability to, to connect. You need an amendment, so that's one of the reasons why Evapco needed to go through the amendment process to move the categories up. I personally feel like it gives the municipality a lot of power and leverage to figure out if that's where they want their capacity to go. It's not, I mean, it is a first come, first served, but if the properties are in long-range, they have to go through the municipality in order to get their category changed. Also, we like to have consistent our water and sewer service areas with our municipal growth areas as well, so therefore, the municipal growth areas are all the future areas that could potentially be annexed. So, we do like to have those properties in a long-range planning category, because if you're saying you anticipate to annex them, you're also saying that you anticipate probably serving them with water and sewer in the future. So I also have the sewer map, which matches the water map. There are very few in the city that had one over the other, so it, it's primarily consistent throughout that the service areas are the same.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have a question. Antrim Boulevard, I see we have that as a priority there at the end towards Travanyan Road. Are there actually plans that I've not heard of, that people want to develop that area?
25 years ago.
Right, 25 years ago. Whereas, I'm thinking in the more near future, we're talking about Ballinger Park, and we're probably going to want to do bathrooms of some sort for a park, and that's not considered a priority.
At this point, there is a, a project in the, the direct CIP to extend the water service in Antrim Boulevard to, to basically...
To create a loop.
...provide another loop.
Right, okay.
So, so that, that we wanted to make sure we didn't run into any roadblocks. If that project does get funded, we want it to be in the priority area. I don't know if there will be opportunity for, you know, low-interest funding through MDE or anything like that, but we don't want to close the door to it, or have to scramble and amend the plan in order to apply for financing. So we, we, you know, there, there's not a site plan pending, but the city wants to extend service in Antrim Boulevard, at least for water.
Right. So then let's talk about Ballinger Park. If we finally get our butts in gear and get Ballinger Park going, I'm sure there's a thought, even though it's a nature park, that there should be some bathroom-type amenities there. Why can't we represent that as a priority as opposed to, what is that, 10-plus years right now?
It has been discussed, and the, my current understanding is that, at least in the foreseeable future, we would be looking at porta-pots rather than a permanent bathroom facility at, at the park at this point. I, I do not know how the observatory project may affect that. The observatory at Bear Branch in Westminster outside Westminster does not have a restroom facility in it, but it is within so many feet of the actual nature center that does have facilities. I don't, I don't know building code-wise if that's gonna present a problem if we serve that observatory building with a porta-pot, but that, that will be fleshed out during that, that project.
I'm just, I'm curious why we would essentially bind our hands on that area.
How difficult is it to make the amendment?
We do an amendment two times a year, the spring and in the fall.
I mean, if we had to change it...
I'm just wondering what the problem is having on there now.
We don't, we don't have a project in place to say how we're gonna serve it and how we're gonna pay for it. That's why, that's why it doesn't stay in that priority area, because we don't have a project on the books or a funding mechanism lined up to extend service to it. Now, once Meads Crossing develops, that will bring water and sewer much closer to the Ballinger property, and, you know, we may have some opportunity at that time to tie into the system there and save, you know, a tremendous amount of money as opposed to running lines up there currently. But that, you know, again, that, they may be breaking ground later this spring or summer if things go well for them, but again, at this point, we don't have the project to serve the property lined up.
Even, even with Meads Crossing, would be the first area, when they bring that water and sewer into the area, that would be an extremely expensive project to begin with, because you're going underneath 1, 194 and up a hill, it's a flat land up there.
River track.
So, and I, I guess just to continue on with that thought, we're also looking at a substantial floodplain area that gets into a whole, another level of permitting through the state, which we, we need to avoid with the Evapco project, because they're gonna directional bore the sewer line under the, the floodplain and the, the stream there, and the, on either side where that line daylights will be outside of the floodplain area. But this, this distance is considerably longer, so it's, it will be a big deal to serve Ballinger Park, especially with, with sewer, because it, we may be looking at a pump station and things like that for it, and we just, we just don't have enough of the project details fleshed out to, to be able to talk, start talking about how we're gonna fund it.
Does the maintenance of public facilities relate at all to maintenance of a porta-pot?
It, it's, it's under the, the blanket of Parks and Rec. They, you know, have a, have a vendor who provides those and maintains them and, and services them.
You can't hardly maintain a public restroom.
Right, and that's...
That's kind of why...
We abandoned that many years ago out, out in Memorial.
Exactly, exactly. You can't keep them, can't keep them in repair.
That'd be up to the vendor.
Yep.
And the contractor town would have it's a vendor. Okay, with that being heard, I'll entertain a motion of one sort.
I'll make the motion to request to approve the Tawnytown portion of the plan.
And I'll second it.
And there is a, a letter, a, a letter for your signature, just certifying consistency with your plan.
Do you have the letter tonight?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. I just, in a second, Judy. I have a couple of little questions, may or may not actually pertain to the motion, but, Henry, it says on here the average use is .355 million gallons per day. Is that what is being used, or is that what's being pumped? Where was the measurements, is that the measures that we get from billing to customers, or is that from what's being pumped from the wells?
The water service, are you talking about?
Yes, I'm talking about the water service.
That comes out of the billing system, the department uses.
So that's what we're billing, that's not what's being pumped?
You're right.
Am I right?
Yes. It's, they're close.
Well, I'm concerned, because it says that there's an average of 8% that's unaccounted for.
That's leaks, that's...
8%, 8%?
That's normal.
That's a lot of loss.
That's excellent.
That's excellent?
Yeah. The average loss is about 15 for most cities. I mean, it just, it just is.
Not having anything to compare. If you're saying eight is good, then eight, eight is good.
When we started out, right before streetscape, I think it was 20%. Right. And ever since then, it's been coming down, and there, you know, you've got the billing and the usage almost converging with 7%. And, you know, I've talked to the engineers about that, what is, what would be an acceptable number, and we're within the acceptable limits, simply because of the system and the potential for leaks, cracks, and all the I and I problems that come along with that. And we, we have an excellent leak detection system we have now, the one-on-one. So, for the better part of it, it does, you know, we don't, leaks don't get biased too, too often.
Okay.
So you have, but on the same note, I wanted to ask a question.
Okay, I have a follow-up to that. Go ahead then.
Okay, perfect. How does that account for fire department usage?
We count for that, they turn that number into us.
Is that in the, in the bill, or the usage billable side?
No, it's the usage, it comes out, no, we don't...
And we don't bill it, but we, it's in the usage.
It's in, it's in our billing system. It's not billed, but it's accounted for as usage.
Very good.
So what, what you're saying then is, what, what comes out of a hydrant is not accountable, right? So on a fire, what comes out of is part of that 8%?
Lost, possibly, because what, you know...
Because there's no metering on that.
Well, typically at a fire, we usually get, get a number from the fire department.
They give an estimate.
They give an estimate.
But, right.
Okay.
Okay, you want to put meters on?
No, 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 no. Only when they come through, the outside contractors come through in the summertime and tap into a hydrant to fill pools.
Exactly.
That we don't get paid for. Now, the follow-up to the water is also the sewer. If that's what is being used, how come there's so much more sewer usage? I mean, we can't have that much leak, and we certainly can't count on that much rain, is that right? Or is, I mean, you're talking like .706 million gallons a day for sewage compared to .355 for water, and not all water goes down the drain. Actually, is, is our sewer system in that bad a shape, our piping to the plant?
Well, unlike the water system, there's not a real good methodology to, to track it. We have a program in place that, our goal is to videotape, well, one-third of the city every year. And what we do is we stick a camera down in there and we go look for, for...
Infiltrations.
Infiltrations. And then what we do is we have, certain monies allocated in that fiscal year, that if we're, we find something that's not that expensive and we can fix it, we will. Otherwise, if it's an expensive project, what we do is we get estimates and we carry that over to the next year for the next year's budget to put in. But sewer is a little bit more difficult than water. There's, you can, you can get on the meters and listen for, for leaks, but it's really difficult with sewer. And we'll read about this kind of stuff, it's, it's hard to do, even if you pick a good spot to, to read it. So it's, it's no pleasure reading about water and sewer.
Are you sure?
She's like, she enjoys it.
Sorry about that, but it might be a job for somebody.
No imps are taken, trust me.
So I had to find something interesting to talk about.
You did.
So what limiting factors does this really put on us? I mean, the fact that we're, as she says, we have no future.
I'm sorry.
I mean, that, that provides a gap there, as to what we're, what we can immediately do, and what we theoretically aren't gonna do for 10 years. There's a gap that I kind of feel is a little binding on us, and can that be addressed? Is it really a problem? What's the...
Well, you...
Go ahead.
I was just gonna jump in. As Andrea said, the, the county will solicit amendments twice a year. There's a spring and a fall amendment cycle every year for this plan, and that, that's how we would, I guess, you know, during the life of the plan, continue to make updates. So, it's, with the length of time that a subdivision plan, like a major subdivision or even a site plan, take to go through the process, realistically, there, there would be time to get an amendment into the plan and, and have the state look at it, probably before the project would be through the site plan process and ready to break ground. It's not perfect, but that is, that is how we can address things, you know, moving forward if there's something that pops up that we weren't anticipating. But again, unless we have a project and, and a funding source identified to put something into that, that priority, or that, I'm sorry, the future area, we, we can't make, we can't make the numbers all work for the plan.
I understand. So who is this ultimately coming down from, the county or the state?
State.
They just like to ran on our parade, you know?
Well, there's a little bit more to all of this as well. We had a bigger area, which then, then puts us in a bind with recharge area, and if you're saying you're just gonna be servicing these things within the, the 10-year, you gotta make sure you have all your, your recharge, and that means buying land, and then you, you get into problems with, what the hell is the other?
All right, Henry, we all have seen you.
That's okay, thanks. Thanks for bailing me out. But there's a couple of other things that, you know, if, you know, before, we were really wide and we were running into problems, so we narrowed it down, and we feel as though we can live within the, the, the two-years updates, you know, to the, to the plan.
The only time that we've really ever been pinched in the last several years, and it's been more than several, is when the city wants to do a project.
Right.
Okay, when the property owners want to do it, they're focused on this, they know what they have to do, they're on it, but the city's like, "Okay, we're gonna build a new well," and we know we're doing it, we're drilling the well, and then you get to the point where you're gonna fund it, and it's like, "Oh, it's not on the plan, but we're drilling this well." So, I think we're past that now, because we're a little more cognizant of what we gotta do.
Okay, thanks. Is there any comments from the floor? No, we have a motion on the floor that this is consistent with our master plan and has been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Carrie?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we'll see that the letter gets signed. Next item on the agenda is the Twenty Town Volunteer Fire Company Electric Message Display Board Requesting Approval, and since I have a conflict of interest, since I'm the officer of the company, of Twenty Town Fire Company, I'm gonna pass this over to George. Would you handle it, please?
Okay, Jim, we'll let you fill us in.
I'll just, excuse me, take a second just to set it up. In your packet was, was basically a, an excerpt from this plan, as much as I can fit on a copy of, because we produce local format stuff like this, so, in your packet was a, basically a bird's-eye view, kind of a simplified site plan, and then, and then a, an elevation of the proposed sign, and Fire Company's here to fill in the details on it, and I'll, we'll come back to me after they've...
Would you identify yourself?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, my name is Tom Hoag, I am representing the Tawnytown Fire Department. We're here tonight to request approval for the demo of the existing signage out in front of the firehouse, it's been there for years, and request approval to furnish and install new signage, which will be a... which will be a seven-foot-six by six-foot new electronic sign versus the slide-in letters that we've had for years. The sign itself will be thirty-two inches by sixty-nine. The existing sign, as it appears right now, is six-foot by six-foot. So we are getting a foot... one foot, six-inch extension to the length of it. There will be brick to the left, right, bottom, and then there will be a cap on top to present the sign nicely. It is an LED sign. The intensity, as far as the light, is adjustable. So obviously, in the daylight hours, you want it a little bit brighter so you can see it. And at nighttime, it won't look like Las Vegas. We can turn the intensity down. The message length can certainly comply with your regulations and the time limits for the things that would come across, adjustable to whatever your needs are. Again, it's just something, the way to improve our message that we try to get across to the public. I'll entertain any questions.
Your lighted area is thirty-two by sixty-nine?
The sign, the electronic sign itself, is exactly thirty-two by sixty-nine, yes sir.
Two sides.
That is correct. It is a front and back. It's two cabinets, yes sir.
And will that be on the exact site of the one that's down there now?
That is correct. Now, like I said, what's existing is six-foot. This is seven-foot-six. So it's going to come out a little bit a foot and six inches longer than it is now. The width is two feet, which is a little bit wider. And the reason for that is just to carry the brickwork appropriately so it doesn't look like it's going to teeter, you know, it should be acceptable to the eye.
Jim, did you have anything more to add to that?
You'll probably recall our relatively recent discussions on the bulletin board sign ordinance that provided the ability for bulletin board type signs to be updated to electronic message boards. In the downtown district where the fire company is located, we did limit those signs to, and we use the term governmental entities. And I may defer to the city attorney general or the city manager on how we have that nexus to the fire company.
You taking this?
If I need to, I guess.
But, at any rate, so the fire company, during those discussions, did rule that they would be eligible for the message board type sign. So, I don't... I'm not sure if the current ordinance is up on the web today, speaks to the latest revisions, but that's essentially why we're here. The fire company is one of the groups, along with the elementary school, who have been waiting for a number of years for the ordinance to be amended so that they could move forward with a project like this. So, now is the time to finally make it happen.
Did you work into the plan neighboring or nearby bedrooms?
Yeah, they can stay.
That is part of the reason that the signs come to be by planning commission as opposed to it just being an administrative process.
Yep.
That way, there's some, you know, the agenda is posted out front. It's posted on the city website. There's obviously a public process involved where anybody who's interested can come out and hear what the presentation is. And so that's... and also, of course, the planning commission has the authority to provide some, you know, limitation on the size and things like that based on the environment around it.
Is the intensity of your light controlled by a timer or anything?
My understanding is that we can control the intensity.
Really, or by a timer?
On the computer program itself, that number is in there during the daylight hours and the evening hours. So that is adjustable, yes.
So it senses itself when it reaches a certain...
That I don't want to tell you. I don't want to mislead you. My feeling is when I do the program for a sign, it'll tell me what percentages I want during daylight hours. And then at eighteen or nineteen-hundred hours at night, it would again reduce, so it wouldn't be so overwhelming.
That is more by timing as opposed to like light sensitivity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to make sure it's something fairly automated, not that someone has to go in there and dim.
No, no, this is automatic. This is a full-color, ten-millimeter sign. The clarity should be exceptional. And again, I think it's just going to help us get the things that we do put on the sign out there easier, obviously, than sliding letters in. Because it seems like as soon as we put a sign up, it's obsolete before, you know, and then we're changing it again. So, I mean, it's going to make our job a lot easier.
Is this sign coming from the same company as the city's sign?
No.
No?
Don't know.
Oh, you don't know?
The banner at the top?
Yes.
Is that lighted at all?
The header has not been totally determined. We are in discussion of... I had a quote brilliant idea that turned out to be a little expensive. I wanted to see a piece of granite with the letters actually engraved. And when I contacted Merkel monuments and Laow memorials and things like that, I had an expensive taste.
Right.
So we are, with that in mind, we are giving another opinion, whether we're going to have a piece of brass brought across the front just enough to encompass the Tony Town Volunteer Fire Company, you know, again, keeping it small. Or possibly a backlit sign where the letters are just etched out in plexiglass. So that hasn't been determined. And in all honesty, it really doesn't have to have one or the other because the thirty-two-inch cabinet could have a small reverse letter back or at the top similar to what you have down the road.
Shouldn't that be figured out before we...
I kind of feel that way.
Well, the overall sign, if you take what we've encompassed in the drawing, we're still well in, you know, in the reserve that you have.
I understand, but whether the top being lit or not is something that I feel like should be known before we approve, personally. I don't know how the rest of the commission...
What's the size of that top?
The cap is...
Seven-six across.
Right.
What's the height of that cap?
Again, it goes by the kerning of the letters, probably not much more than four or five inches.
Four or five inches?
Yes. It's just a cap on top, as it appears in the drawing.
Doesn't the city of Tony Town have a cap on top? And how's that lit?
It's not.
It's not lit?
No, it is not.
Okay, I didn't think it was.
Any more questions from the council?
I'm trying to decide what the size of the sign. Is your information going to be scrolled across? Or is it just going to be written up there and then changed as needed? I mean, is it something that's going to be flashing?
I will do whatever the city in your ordinance will want us to do.
Okay.
I mean, right now, with the way the signage is existing, it's beyond obsolete.
Right.
So if you tell me that it's just, you know, I mean, I'll follow your specifications that are in your guidelines, obviously.
Did we set guidelines? I think we took it on a case-by-case basis, right?
Right.
The only limitations for these signs are that they... The messages they display have to do with what's happening at the site or community-type announcements. In the case of the fire company, the vast majority, what they do is going to be under the umbrella of community organization, you know, community-type events and stuff. So, but in terms of intensity or frequency of changes, the code is silent on those topics.
Didn't we have distance from residential properties, though? Wasn't there something about...
Not for downtown. I mean, didn't enter any of those in the code? I know we didn't do it for downtown.
Thought we didn't want flashing downtown.
Well, we don't want flashing in any of them, but especially not of red and blue and things like that. Well, if they dim it at night, that's going to help with the hours.
Things like proximity to a dwelling and things of that nature are among the things that we need to be discussing here at the planning commission, you know, for any of these signs. You know, as much as we did for the one down at the park, that, you know, we looked at that and tried to determine, you know, okay, it's how far from the nearest house. And there's, you know, a row of fir trees maintained by the city at the edge of the park. And, you know, those factors all play into, you know, the potential impact of a message board.
How are we going to control the intensity of the lights, the bulbs in these lights, in these signs? Can everyone be different?
They can.
They will.
How do we regulate, you mean?
Regulate the intensity of the brightness of the sign itself? Or might it conflict with something nearby, or...
There is general language with regard to illumination for any sign that it can't create a, you know, any glare or traffic hazard and that, you know, it minimize any adverse impact on adjacent properties, things like that. So that's... it's somewhat vague because we don't speak to, you know, how many lumens, measure it at a certain point. Not that we have, you know, a light meter or anything to really go out and measure that anyhow. Probably why we don't speak to it in the code. But that is the section that, when there are complaints, that's what we go back on. You know, if somebody says, you know, that the company next door has their sign on at 2:00 a.m. or whatever it may be. And typically, you know, we're able to resolve it just by, you know, talking through it with the business and saying, you know, hey, you know, when you close it at nine o'clock, you know, can you make sure your timer's set to, you know, kill the lights on the sign, you know, at 9:30? Unless it's like a security lighting, but a sign's not going to be security lighting. So, we just have general language in the code about illumination.
Yeah.
And that's what would, you know, offer some level of protection to it.
Somewhere along the line there that might surface, that problem.
Certainly, you could specify, you know, either a foot candle measurement like we do with the site development plan. That's what we look at for site plan lighting, things like that, to make sure that, you know, the light from the parking lot's not going to spill over to the adjacent property or something like that.
Well, you know, the streetlights out on Roth Avenue were too bright. Any comments from the floor?
I have a quick question. Is it possible to have that light intensity controlled to a close level? So that as the sun goes down and gets dark, that it automatically dims the light?
I would assume so, yes sir.
I know for myself, I'm very involved in the town, and there have been times, like the seafood feed they had and when they had the toy events and the auction.
Would you come up, please, and so we can hear you better?
Sorry about that.
Identify yourself.
Kat Grove, hi. I know for myself, I'm highly involved in the town. And there have been times where I didn't know about, like when they had their seafood feed and they had their toy auction and their things like that, that I didn't know about it, even though I drive through town numerous times a day, until I happened to look up and see their sign and slow down, or I stopped at one of the many shops in town and happened to get in my car and look over and see the sign, where if there's one scrolling with bigger text or something like that, it would be more noticeable, just like the one that's at the park showed things more and I could see more like that. So I think this is a great idea, and I don't think it would cause a distraction. The town that I grew up in in Delaware has the same thing outside of their police... or outside of their fire department, and I've seen it in many towns. And I don't think it would cause a distraction for drivers or anything like that. And I think it would be, you know, with being a volunteer fire department, they rely on the things like this to bring in funds to help them function. So I think it's something that would be a great thing to help them out, you know. And we have a phenomenal first responders team with our EMTs, our fire department, and our police department. I think it's something they really need, and it's been bounced around for months and months and months now. So, I'm all for it, and I back these guys and gals to get it. So, that's all I've got to say about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jim, anything further?
Well, I guess at this point, we need to decide if you're ready to take some action or if you need to, you know, find out the specifics on the header portion as to whether it's going to be illuminated or not, or...
Well, we could have a motion, but depending on certain things to be done later on or be checked on later on.
Let me ask real quick. It seems like... Are you in favor of it being lit or not? I mean, I think that's, at that point in time, if you say...
Well, sir.
If they bring them back and it's lit, and then you say no, it's not a bother.
Well, I guess, really what it comes down to...
I think you make that decision tonight.
I think what it really comes down to is, if it is lit, it has to comply with that portion. I mean, that wouldn't even come to us to begin with if it were just a sign that were lit, correct? So it really doesn't matter so much.
Well, it should be lit, I feel.
Yeah, it needs to be lit.
For them to know what department's actually advertising these things, it should be. Your current sign, is it lit twenty-four hours a day? It is not lit at all. It's a streetlight only. Streetlight only? That's correct, sir.
We got a lot of good comments on that sign out along the main highway. Everybody talks about that sign. It's real nice. Anything further? Is there a motion then that we approve their request to have a sign?
I want to make a motion to approve the request for an electronic sign at the fire company.
I'll second it. And then I'd like to figure out if we're going to... what kind of boundaries we're putting on it.
What restrictions there are, correct?
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Any discussion now?
Right.
Do we want to limit the time of transitions, the delay, anything like that?
Well, and that's, again, I would go back to if the sign's bigger in size.
And it's lit and the other one wasn't.
Right.
It should be.
If there's not a problem with keeping your message, you know, just stationary.
Well, I don't think we can expect them to have a static message. That's a waste of technology at that point.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just saying they can change it, but I don't want to see the, you know, half a message come on and then slowly scroll across because then you've got the people that are sitting in traffic waiting for the words.
Crawl?
Yeah.
That's called crawl.
Crawl, thank you.
Well, I think...
So, I mean, it can change, but not...
I think when we talked about this previously, I had mentioned that we should not allow animations. And a crawl, I think, would be an animation because that's what causes the most distraction. If you have something that changes every five seconds, that's one thing, but animations are the distraction. So I think we should prohibit animations on the sign. And definitely any strobe effect.
Right.
And I don't think that because it's a tiny bit larger than the one that's there now, I can't see any problem with visibility in that area of a sign a little larger.
The one thing I'd like to say right now is the six-foot-by-six-foot sign that's existing right now is all signage.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
Because it's all slid little letters all over the place. This is going to be a fraction of that sign. That's why we're doing the brickwork and trying to make it aesthetically pleasing. You know, so the sign itself is going to be much smaller because it will allow us to have several message boards throughout the day or week.
The structure is larger, but the actual active sign area is smaller than what's exist.
Absolutely, yes sir.
You know, thirty-two inches isn't very big for a sign. I was wondering why you are restricting it to thirty-two inches.
We have a budget?
Yeah.
And in my estimation, thirty-two inches by six... yes, it's huge. Yes, we're trying to watch the dollars, obviously.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. Anything else?
I'd like to just ask you, Henry. Yeah, when you talked about animations, what does that mean? I mean, for example, you know, and what we did with our sign in the springtime is we had a flower come up, bloom.
That's an animation.
Then it's, well, let me finish.
Yeah.
Right.
And then it said, welcome spring.
Right.
Everybody loved it.
Well, except for that nobody's living right next door to it or across the street from it either. And I think I'm thinking more of, I mean, it would be great during the day, but I'd hate for you to have to change your sign from day to night.
I agree, based on the content, right.
Right. I mean, you know, even...
And we're also looking at the city sign is a little further off the road. You don't have people driving you slowly. They're going to go right past that. This one, it's going to be a lot more of a distraction because it's literally, was it, five feet off the road? Because that's the sidewalk there. Welcome sign, yes sir.
Four o'clock in the afternoon, they're going to get a lot of views.
They are going to get a lot of views.
Because that traffic is creeping at four o'clock.
Any more comments?
I have a question.
Yes sir.
You talked a little bit about daytime versus evening.
Yes sir.
Perhaps in the evening after a certain hour, the message could be a, you know, a more static message.
Absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
Be a less, you know, that the light would be less intense, but perhaps that the, the, the changing display would be, you know, a slow frequency or, or perhaps after a certain hour in the evening, it just says, you know, Tony Town Volunteer Fire Company.
Well, that's what we just said we didn't wanna make them do.
Well, and that's it, but that's what I'm asking, can they, can they do that in their computer so that it?
That would be kind of a voluntary.
Right.
Evidently the computer does it.
Yeah, I don't know enough about them to know if the computer does that or not.
If I may say something, it was brought to my attention that I have seen fire department signs that have a flame in the background or something like that when we are promoting smoke detectors.
Yeah.
You know, um, so at that time, that would be an animation, but I think it would be important. I, you know, so there, there, there may be a little bit, I mean, it's, it's up to the council, obviously, what they want. But I, I could see that happening as long as it wouldn't be an eyesore.
Well, and that's, I mean, I think it would depend on how dim it was.
Yeah.
At night too.
But I also agree with the zoning administrator that at nighttime, I believe a static, you know, sign is much better than, you know, anything.
Well, and I'd like to think that we have a good enough relationship with the fire department that if we went in and said, hey, your sign's kinda crazy.
This is a learning experience for me as well as you. I, you know, I've never really done much in the way of signage, so this, you know.
It's gonna be a learning experience after you get it lit.
This'll be a good example. Okay, oh.
Well, we need to figure out animation wise, if, are we gonna prohibit or are we not? Because they wanna do animations.
Well, I think, I don't, I don't think. I don't think there's anything wrong with a certain amount of animation.
Right, I, I agree with the animation. I mean, that's part of the sign, that is part of the sign.
Well, can, can we say yes?
I'm up at the house and I see it all the time and I've seen it, I see it as a good thing. They got two signs.
Two signs that are higher off of the road than what this is.
You okay with that? Having animation?
Personally, no.
I'm gonna be the first one being beat with it, so.
Last call. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So carried.
Thank you all for your.
You taking it back over?
He wants his hammer back.
Give that hammer back.
Put that back.
As long as I can sit out there and make comments, I'm. Thank you, George.
I didn't hear any comments from you.
Couldn't make any out there.
He's whispering in there.
No conflict of interest. I wanted to.
It's hard.
Huh? It's hard, that's why I'm having to do that right now.
I was gonna say, aren't you coming up next?
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, recommendation from the mayor and council regarding city needs for alleys, driveways between Commerce Street and Maryland Avenue.
I'll repose my vote.
You can stay there if you'd be quiet. Jimmy, you wanna lead us off again and Jay or anybody wants to make comments on this? Get us started. Be careful with that, that's real old.
Look at that.
Well, as you recall, we, we discussed this matter last month. It's essentially a paper driveway that's on that, that 1930s plat for the Commerce Street area, which, as you know, did not develop as it was originally platted and it was, areas were replatted as different properties were sold or divided up. People bought chunks of lots and replated some lots and put a house on them. So it, it just did not develop the way that plan would indicate. So we're left with a, essentially a driveway where the, I put my glasses on so you guys can see it, where the green yellow tape flags on there. Currently, the hitchman owns property in what's the bottom right corner of that, that whole cluster of lots in the bottom right corner. Pretty much everything within those blue tape flags is, is now the hitchman property. So they have asked that the city give up any right that they have to that, that driveway that's the green yellow flag. So currently what's on the ground there, adjacent to it, there's one house on Commerce Street that fa- that faces Commerce Street and there is a house on Maryland Avenue, on the cul-de-sac of Maryland Avenue that would also be contiguous with the driveway on the, what would be the, I guess, the upper side of that alley. So the question before you really is not necessarily who gets it or how we dispose of it or, or what that process is. The question really is, does the city, is there a public need for the city to maintain some right to that, that driveway? That's assuming we actually have some. So it is, our comprehensive plan with our 2010 update, we did not clean up the mapping in this area. So our comprehensive plan still shows the alleyway that's on here. It still shows Maryland Avenue connecting to York Street. So, so this is on the comprehensive plan. And it's something that we need to really decide that, you know, is there some reason that the city would want to build an alley there? That's really the question.
Go ahead, George, start.
That part of Maryland Avenue that's supposed to connect with York Street is dead now, right?
Correct.
All right, that's not a part of this at all.
And, and unfortunately, we, I don't recall if we just did not, with our 2010 update, there was some discussion about requesting another extension from the state planning department. And we went back and forth a little bit on it, but the mayor and council decided that they wanted to go ahead and get the plan approved and, and formally adopted. So we, I guess the last, the last couple of months, we sort of scrambled to try to make sure we were ready to adopt it. And we didn't, we didn't do some of the finer detail points that perhaps would've been nice to do at that point. And this is one of those things that probably could've been cleaned up on the map if we had taken a little bit more time when we did that update because Maryland Avenue existed as a cul-de-sac at that point. And, and we just didn't take the time to, to correct some of those details on the map.
Does, is there a way that that driveway that crosses the hitchman, can we ever come straight out through the hitchman's property to the main road if we would ever get a right of way? Now, I don't see it, but.
You mean from the cul-de-sac?
We had the right of way.
You mean, hold on, George, you mean from the cul-de-sac?
From the cul-de-sac.
From Maryland Avenue to.
The right of way come out to the main road?
It did, but not now. He bought it.
He bought the, okay, okay, that's what, that's what I want, no, okay, then, okay. I've got my decision.
So Jim or Jay, put this in some type of words for us. What, you're, you want us to actually, to determine if this is in the city's needs or?
Well, that decision is made by the city council as to whether or not they need this. Or said the way I'm gonna pose it to them, is this surplus to the city? And if it's surplus to the city and they determine that, there's a process they go through and then it can be disposed of. And that was proposed to them and at that meeting is when the decision said, well, hey, it could be a road because there's some issues with whether it's owned or not owned by the city, but just pretend it's owned by the city. It could be a road, it's on the master plan, the planning commission deals with the master plan. Maybe the planning commission should make a recommendation. So you don't get to make the decision, you're just making a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not you, in your capacity as the planning commission, believe that that road is necessary or possible to be used by the city in the future. And they can do whatever they want.
I have a personal opinion on that piece of land there. I'm not making a, a recommendation right now, but I feel that the city should retain that alley for the future, just in case. There's so many things that goes deeper than that, that I would, I would, could discuss, but that's not what we're here tonight for. We're, we're here just to determine whether the city should keep it for the future. And I, I personally feel that the city should keep it for the future.
So you're saying that as, as we own the land, it should be maintained city property and it fits into our master plans now or will in the future, basically, right?
That's just a personal opinion to start with.
And I'm not saying we own it.
No.
Because that's the crux to this problem is that we do not have a title deed for that property. What you see in front of you is what the city has as its claim to ownership. It was never transferred to the city by the people who developed that. So it's not owned by the city. It's deeded, it's dedicated to the city, but it's not deeded to the city.
Either way, it's up to the city or us to make a recommendation on the use of that land regardless of who owns it.
Right, we probably have the best claim on the title, better than anyone, and the, our action would be, are we giving that claim up?
My personal opinion is the city of Tony Town should never give up any property that it's got a right to.
Okay, any other comments? I'm not gonna ask for a motion yet or a recommendation, but is there any comments from the floor? If you do, please come to the mic and identify yourself.
That, that thing, we still can't hear through that, Jim. That mic is not picking up anybody's voice.
I don't know, is it working? Chris Tillman, the question I have is, is if you, as I understand it, and I'm gonna have to walk over here, you're talking about this alleyway here?
Yes.
Which is not even there.
Which? So the, the owner of this property here, are they laying claim to it? Do they want it for anything?
They just wanna use the entrance.
You have, I, I would this out, but if, if, if we have, we the city have the claim, the best claim to that and they want it, they should offer something for it.
You mean by? Okay, well, it's probably not for sale unless it's surplus and.
I mean, that's not out of the realm of possibility because we could dispose of property that way regardless of what claim we have. But it, the underlying question is, what, would we, what's your recommendation?
You're the only one that hasn't made a comment.
Well, because I look at it as, you know, sharing a backyard. Sure, we'd like to hold on to it, but.
It is the city.
The city.
Okay.
But I don't see any reason why we can't let somebody borrow it with that understanding. I thought, my thing was, all they wanted was to use the entrance way, to go onto their property.
We don't know what they wanna use it for yet.
Oh, I thought that's what he told us when he was here last time.
Well, because we, they didn't present us with a site plan, so until we see a site plan, we don't know exactly.
Do anything, I'm just saying, but if that's all he wants it for.
From, from last month, the discussion was they, okay, the, the hitchman has, you know, more recently acquired the, the lots adjacent to that section of the driveway or alley. And they want to develop that for additional display, additional display lot. So there will be a site plan coming forward on that, but they were trying to resolve the issue of that, that little strip of property. And due to the location of an existing garage on the Commerce Street corner, I guess where the blue tape flag is adjacent to the alley at the left there is pretty, pretty close to where the garage is. So they were hoping to utilize that alley to connect to their, their lot and the existing site.
Can I recommend, do they own, and I'm talking they, has the hitchman own the house on the corner?
Yes.
Of Commerce and 134? 194?
You mean the, the old, the old Klingon property?
Yes.
That's right, the, the brick houses is here. The existing hitchman's site is basically from these tape flags all the way down. And they have more recently acquired all of these lots.
Right.
So the alley is adjacent to a home that's on Commerce Street that occupies these first couple of lots or maybe first few lots. And then, again, this did not develop the way it was originally platted. So Maryland Avenue is actually ends in a cul-de-sac.
Right.
Here by lots 74, 75, 82, 83. There are existing homes adjacent to the hitchman property here. There's a, a home that's right on the cul-de-sac here and there's one on the flag lot back here.
Well, there's one that comes right out against the alley.
Of Maryland Avenue that actually the driveway crosses the hitchman's property. So basically the alley is adjacent to a home here that faces Commerce Street and a home here that accesses the cul-de-sac of Maryland Avenue. The other portion of it, it leads basically to the hitchman property and is contiguous to the hitchman property on this side. So it, pretty much the only place it goes is adjacent to the house on Commerce Street and adjacent to the house that's off the cul-de-sac on Maryland Avenue.
Okay, so according to you.
So there's really three, I guess there would be three, you know, owners involved in the property around it. But essentially it leads, you know, past the house on Commerce, past the backyard of the house on Maryland Avenue to the hitchman's existing site.
So based on what you said, that they only wanted to be able to get access to their property, if they own that property, they can have their own driveway coming off Commerce, right? So that would, that would cover that issue.
I mean, they have to, they have to take the garage down, but yeah, they've got it.
Yeah, they would have to remove the garage.
I guess it's how much they wanna use the parking, use, you know, they're set, they have to set the priorities.
The driveways make with an imprint of going in and out there.
It's got the cutaway already there.
Already there.
That can be changed, George.
When you're back in the cul-de-sac, it's not very residential looking back there. And if the hitchman continues with his general business all the way up to Commerce Street, it's gonna be that much closer to those houses that's right along the, the so-called paper alley.
Well, then what would happen is when they bring our, their site plan to us, we would require them to put some type of buffer in there.
Well, it should have a buffer in there.
It should have.
Well, it, it doesn't now, you're saying.
Good buffer.
Well, that's something we'll have to require at the time they present the site plan as a condition. So we're still back to the original. At this point, I will entertain a motion.
Do they want a motion? You really don't want a motion?
Or a recommendation, if not, if not a motion, a recommendation.
The mayor and council are looking for a recommendation on disposition of the driveway.
I'll make a recommendation.
What?
I'll make a recommendation that the, that the town retain the land for possible future use.
Is there a second?
In case it needs it for future.
Yeah, I second that.
Is there, okay, there's a second. So we have, so it's open for discussion then. Hearing the motion, is there anyone, anyone from the floor?
I'll cut the grass there now, I'm just curious.
People was in the house.
But we're gonna have to now.
Staff, any comment before we? Okay, all those in favor of the recommendation to the city? I guess should say retain it even though it's not.
How about?
What you got there, Jim?
Actually, who, who did make the motion?
George made the motion and I'll second it.
I was trying to scribble down the language. Move to recommend the driveway be retained for future city use.
Okay. Okay, last chance for discussion or questions. Okay, all those in favor of recommendations to the city council signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstein.
You're already out of it, right? You're already out of it, right?
I need to make a...
Karen? You should have made a claim before you got up, Roy, and I should, I should have asked you to, that you were...
Said that.
Anyway.
On the mic?
Yes.
Moving forward, ordinance and agreements, none. Jim, your planning zoning report, uh... Give me a minute to find it.
Before I, before I get into that, I do want to take just a minute to introduce, for those of you who don't know or you know who, Bobby Moser from Carroll County Conference of Planning is going to be acting as our liaison since Scott Graff moved on to a different department. So I know some of you know Bobby from years ago, but for those who don't, sitting here in the front row, and you'll be hearing from her in a few minutes, um, county update. So I guess as far as my report goes this month, we've already touched on the water sewer plan, message board, and there's the Hitchman site. So next up would be, in your packet, there was a eight and a half by 11 kind of sketch plan for some lots in Meadowbrook. This will be in a future phase of Meadowbrook, where Buoy Mill Avenue is extended and O'Brien Avenue would be extended. This area is, we'll throw another map up. This is O'Brien Avenue. Here is Buoy Mill. In a future phase of Meadowbrook, these two are, the plan that's approved, O'Brien Avenue continues to cross Buoy Mill to the edge of the, to the edge of the Meadowbrook property, which is about under my pen, it's there at the top of my pen. Now that the Meads Crossing subdivision has final, and given final approval, this little area here is going to be, it's a wooded area, it's about three acres, that's going to be in forest conservation. So per the Meads Crossing plan, this is never going to be developed. So rather than have O'Brien Avenue cross Buoy Mill only to dead end at the woods, I suggested that we end Buoy Mill as a T intersection, and O'Brien as a T intersection with Buoy Mill. And that's what the sketch plan that is in your packet is doing. So these lots being a future phase of Meadowbrook, they have not been recorded yet, so technically it wouldn't be amended and plat, but we would be amending the approved, oh, let's see, it's on the preliminary plan, we don't have to amend that, but when the construction drawings come through, and the plans come through for renovation, they would be different than what was approved years ago, and have been reserved by their development responsibility to screen them. So this is just kind of a sketch plan. It does allow the developer to squeeze more lot in by adjusting some of the other block widths, but essentially where O'Brien Avenue was going to cross over, now can be used to, to locate another home. And there would be, we also talked about leaving a, an easement with a paved blacktop path, connecting the Meadowbrook sidewalk network into the, what will be a, a, a trail through the woods with a future phase of Meads Crossing, so that, you know, folks on the Meadowbrook side will have a nice easy access point to go walk the trail through the wooded lot as well. And then that will connect on the other side then, to the Meads Crossing walking trail network as well. So just this evening, just, it's just in your packet for your consideration, if you have any, either objection to the concept of, of ending O'Brien as a T intersection, or something other than, you know, having an additional lot incorporated into Meadowbrook, you know, love to get some feedback, otherwise the developer will probably go ahead and have Carroll Land Services or CLSI do an official plan that'll be submitted in, in the future 40. So, but right now, it's really just an idea, see if you guys are on board with it or not. If you are, when we get closer to recording this section of Meadowbrook, then the plan is gonna be a little different than what you saw on the preliminary plan, it's gonna have an extra lot.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I, it's better to have a, have a street end at a, at a T.
Is your house is there now or not?
No.
No, not currently.
I got the wrong place. I looked at the wrong place.
I think it's better to end a street at a T than have it stub off and it dead ends somewhere.
Right. We have too many of those around the city anyway.
Right. I mean, not only does the developer get an extra lot out of it, we get more tax money from that lot.
See, otherwise, we would just have a dead end on O'Brien twice.
Right.
You'd have a parking lot.
Yeah, we would.
Comes a code enforcement problem, right?
And that's, and a, a dead end, kind of, eventually it will be extended. If, if, if there's not a, you know, a plan to extend that road, it would have been developed as a cul-de-sac, or, you know, some, something other than a dead end, at least here in the city. So there's just no, since we know about it ahead of time, you know, we know it's not gonna go anyplace, because we have an approved plan with forest conservation right next to it. It, it's not like, it's not like some other situations where we assume that eventually another property was going to develop, and we would continue that road, and then, oh, surprise, it went into ag preservation. So this time, we knew before it got built, so we may as well fix it. So if, if you guys are in agreement with that, I'll get back to the developer and tell him that, you know, when he's ready to, go ahead and move forward to amend that section for adding the extra lot in there.
Anyone have any issues, Holly? Judy?
It's good.
Good. We're good.
On Evapco, obviously, they're not here this month. We really didn't have a whole lot new to share with them. There is, uh, they've, they've gotten my approval since the last time we met. They're still working out some stormwater management issues with CDM Smith. That's, that's proving to be the, you know, I guess the most challenging thing on the site, is, is managing stormwater for such a large impervious area with the geology on the site. But they're continuing to work through that. We still also do not have state highway approval for the project, so it still kind of remains as a contingent preliminary plan, the only thing that's changed, that they've gotten my approval since last month.
You still on Evapco?
Yep.
What's the, are, are they gonna wind up with a pumping station, or are they gonna be able to go into the sewer? I mean, I think we'd kind of left that open, the open, but I'm concerned when it comes final, time to sign the final, or give final, final approval, that that decision won't be ready.
I, I believe, I, I don't have the plan right in front of me, but I believe they do have a forced main for sewer, that's going to have, have a pump on their side of the stream, to go under the stream and back up to, to the sewer line that crosses Memorial Park.
Okay, I don't think I was on the drawings, on the plans that we had. I don't, I don't remember seeing anything about a pump station.
I don't think it was worked out yet.
Yeah, I think they had decided.
Okay.
I don't remember them talking about temporarily going up to 194.
Right.
We were gonna have to address that, as far as private maintenance, because that's the plan, is it's private. Assume that's gonna be our plan, that's what we did before.
Right. Very much like, um, entry and storage.
Right.
Similar situation.
While I'm on that, under your, on your, the agenda, when you list your planning zoning report, on items like Evapco and Meads Crossing, that we made decisions ahead of time, can they be listed here, so they go on the, show up on the agenda, that there's items other than just your report? I just don't want anything to slip through that we may miss, when it's sometime, I know we did a lot of approval on contingency on this and that.
So like contingent approval item?
Yeah. Think, or, yeah. There again.
We could flush that out a little bit. Or I could, um, and I, the last several months, because of how our agenda has been shaping up, I have not had the list of current projects on there. Certainly, I could put that list back on, and perhaps add a, a notation, you know, for, of the status of each one, or, or have a new category for, you know, contingent approval, something like that, and, and put, you know...
You know, I think that's your, that's your call, really, if you want to list that. I'm, I'm more concerned with the main issue ones, with the ones that we put contingencies on, and there's still action items that we're waiting on.
Okay.
Like Meads Crossing, I mean, the state highway approval. I mean, I wouldn't want that to go a couple months and not talk about it.
Okay.
I'm talking about, did, did they get state approval yet?
No.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry, Jim, go ahead with your...
That's okay. With, with next month's agenda, I'll, I'll shoot a draft over for...
Something.
...consideration, and we'll figure out how we want to, how we want to memorialize that. Okay. Uh, let's see. Uh, one more thing on Evapco, the grading only plan, in order, we talked about them getting a building permit before the site plan has final approval, you know, taking things out of order to keep them on schedule. The Marion Council did authorize the issuance of the zoning certificate, as we suggested and recommended last month. And on the county end, in order to keep track of that, and also keep it moving forward, the grading only plan that was approved several months ago is going to be, or has been redlined now to show the, there's been a sequence of construction note added, and the foundation is shown as, as redline changes on the grading only plan, because that plan was approved. It had all the comments in, the bombing is not accounting for that piece. So, so that, again, has been redlined just to accommodate construction of, of the, of the footers and foundation for the building. That's, that's kind of how the county felt, you know, best for them to be able to keep it moving, but also keep track of it and memorialize things. So I think that's about it for Evapco. MRA is still, their engineer is, is getting the Mylar sets ready for signature. They haven't come in yet, but we're also still waiting for the state highway approval, as that was their contingent item as well. So that has not come through just yet either. And I do have a couple things that popped up since, uh, since the packets went out, and this would not be on for any official action, more just, uh, oh, I do have one more thing for Evap, I'm sorry. Evapco is contemplating a new, a new sign to be located where their current freestanding sign is. It will be smaller than the existing sign, but it will be 46 square feet per side, rather than the code limit of 40. The Evapco site plan for the new building across the street does include sidewalk leading to the existing building. So part of that plan is gonna have, you know, some off-site improvements to, you know, connect the, the crosswalk to a sidewalk now that goes and connects into the sidewalks on the existing Evapco site. So, back to the sign, a little bit of a gray area, but you might recall that when there is a, an active site plan, the planning commission has the authority to adjust the size of a freestanding sign, or signage on the site, based on the scale of the building and so on, so that we don't have to stick to the 40 square feet. There's also language about when a non-conforming structure is removed, that what gets replaced there is supposed to be conforming. So the way I look at Evapco's sign, it's smaller than what's there now. I don't have a problem with it being 46 square feet, based on the scale of the Evapco building and site, but if there were any concern, I think you could also say that that portion of the site is also being altered by the site plan across the street. So I guess the short version is, does anybody have an issue with Evapco having a smaller than their existing sign, but still bigger than 40 square feet sign on their site?
It's going into the existing place where the old is.
Existing on the headquarters building.
That's what I asked.
This is the proposal that we have currently.
Now, they're gonna have a sign, the, the sign for the new building is on the building.
Right. The new, the new building will have signage on the building, but not a freestanding sign.
Not a freestanding, okay.
So this sign kind of announces both, both sites, really.
Okay.
So if, and, and they have not formally applied for this, but my intent would be to approve this, if, if, if there are not objections to, to the idea.
I have no objections.
As I said, it, it's smaller than what's on the site now, and ideally, if they could reuse some portion of the existing sign, I could argue, well, it's, you know, a modification, it's not completely new, but they were, they were upfront about it, and said, we really need to do a new footer and everything for this sign. But again, I, you know, technically, their site is being amended by the sidewalk that's being added for the building across the street, so I felt like we could lump this in with, with, with that improvement, if there aren't objections to it. I don't know how quickly they want to move on the sign. I'm guessing they'll probably want to have it up before the new building across the street is, is, you know, having their grand opening and everything. So, so, as I said, they haven't formally submitted anything yet, but, but my intent would be to approve that, if they do come in at 46 square feet. So, all right.
Let's talk about the sign before we move on then. Riley, well, I've heard George's comment, we've heard George's comment. What's your comment?
I think if it's smaller, then they're at least going in the right direction. And it's, what they have now isn't obscene, so going smaller, I don't see a problem with that. And quite honestly, it's, it's turning more into a complex down there than just a, a building, so.
Do you have any problems with it?
I don't have any, no.
So how does that... How does that fit into the site plan? I mean, that should have been, should not be a part of the site plan, because it's on the other side of the road, yet it's still part of a modification. So can they just come in and, and ask you for a permit to change the site plan, or to change the sign, or does that sign need to come back to us as a formal approval?
Well, the, the site plan for the building across the street does show the sidewalk on the headquarters site being added, even though it's across the street, because it is part of the 2910 site plan for the new building. If, if it would give them a better comfort level, I could ask them to, you know, put a little rectangle on there for the new sign at the same time. I don't think that would be a problem. I don't think it's really necessary, but...
I just don't want to catch all of them down the road, so if we can keep everything within order, then there's no questions. I mean, we're already out of order. I mean, we've already given them the approval.
Okay.
Jay, you see where I'm...
Yeah, I mean, I think that, since they're already showing the, what is essentially an off-site improvement, okay, it's not an off-site public improvement, but it's an off-site improvement, that this would be another one that we could capture. The only other way you're gonna have it is if they redo their existing site plan, and we'd call that a red line, right? There wouldn't be any approvals on it anyway, and you'd redline the existing site plan to show this on there. Either way, I think it's gonna have to come back to you as part of this package for a final approval.
Okay, so if they do the red line, and then when they bring it back, we get the, the state highway, we can do it as a final approval, and that sign will be part of that final approval, because it shows that's a red line on the...
I think you should do them all at the same time, right?
I think what Jay's suggesting in terms of a red line would be for the headquarters site plan that we approved some, some time ago, that did the office expansion.
Okay, so you're going way back.
That's way back, too.
That would, that would be the red line scenario.
I mean, if you wanted to play this absolutely 100% right, they're two separate parcels of land, okay? So therefore, you, you really aren't talking about a site plan that affects it, even though we're doing off-site improvements. So if you're... So if you're concerned about precedent and things like that, you say exactly what you have laid out there, except don't put it on this piece of paper. Put it on this piece of paper and call it a red line. Submit it to us when you're submitting the other plan and everything's going to be approved at the same time.
And that'll keep us above water.
And that is no problem then.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Red line.
Ollie?
Yep.
Jim, can I work for you?
And the other thing that has come up since your planning commission packets went out is reverting our future bed and breakfast on York Street. This is actually going to be on your agenda next month. But since we had the drawing come in before you guys met, I thought it'd be a good idea to get it in your hands so you had some time to think about it. As I think everybody's aware, ten York Street, pretty much next door out back, has already gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals to, for grant of a special exception to operate a bed and breakfast out of the home. And the contract purchasers have, are here this evening and they've done a, kind of a simplified site plan and I'm going to let Chris Tillman, who's here, give everybody a copy of that, but essentially, we're looking at some additional paving area from the carriage house to exit the property on Riffles Alley rather than having people exit onto Baltimore Street. So this is, tonight, this is not for any decision, this is just to kind of get it in your hands so you have a little more time to think about it for next month when it'll be an official agenda item.
Okay, I don't want to go into a lot of detail because this is not on the agenda. So, so. Okay.
This is, this is just to get it in your hands a month ahead of time.
I'm okay with that. Is this any different than what we had originally, other than it's larger and?
Uh, the only thing is that we have added the water line, which is highlighted in blue. At the time that we made our original, original presentation and went before the Board of Zoning Appeals, we weren't settled on how we were going to get the volume of water. And we weren't even at that time settled on whether or not we were going to have sprinklers. The county has recommended that if we are looking to any kind of future expansion beyond the original five rooms that we're going to open under, that we would have to at that time have full thirteen hour sprinklers. In order to get the water service to provide that, we would have to bring in a two-inch or three-inch line from the main across York Street. Or our alternate plan, which is what we are showing here, is up Riffles Lane, there is an eight-inch water main that turns and goes out Church Alley, or Church Lane there by the Methodist Church. We are going to be tying on to that main, bringing an eight-inch main down Riffles Lane to the back of our property. That eight-inch main becomes part of your city system at that point. We've already worked that out with the city manager and the Department of Public Works. Everybody is on board with that particular portion of the project. We'll then run a four-inch water main in as far as the carriage house, which would allow then also for any future development at the carriage house, which may or may not happen, we haven't gotten that far yet. And then carries a three-inch water main on to the main house which will serve the sprinklers. And the only purpose of having a water main, a water service that size is, is for the sprinklers. So the new pavement and the new parking addition, the total disturbed area of those is a little less than four thousand square feet. We would not have to then apply for a grading permit or have any required sediment erosion control drawings.
As I said, so this will be on officially next month and this, the, the property is in our downtown revitalization district and as you may recall, when the revitalization ordinance was going through the process and of approval before the mayor and council, one of the items that was discussed was an expedited site plan decision as to whether or not a project would, would require a site development plan. And at that point, the agreement was, you know, if need be, we would hold special meetings and things like that to expedite things in the revitalization district. So rather than scheduling that, I thought we had the opportunity to at least get it in front of you tonight, so we'd go ahead and pass it out so you can think about it for the next month and it will be on officially for the May meeting. So that, that's, that's why.
Open any, I'm open any questions you all may have.
Did you say this is a drive-through? You're going to make a.
Well, what we're going to do is, is, is we don't want our guests to have to try to make that exit out that brick driveway on New York Street, that close to the intersection. So the purpose of the driveway going out to the back is to, once our guests have come in, they, you know, coming into that, that brick driveway there between Four York and Ten York is not really an issue. Getting back out can be challenging. So rather than our patrons having to go out that way, we would like them to be able to go out the back. And then once they are registered guests, then they can go in and out the back. And that way they don't have to, to bother with that tight spot on York Street.
They're having a sharp curve in that driveway in the back.
It, it, it looks, it looks sharp, it's not as sharp in reality as it looks there and it's only a, you know, again, it's only a driveway. So it's not, it is not intended to be a through street by any means.
Through the years, we've always heard of the proposition that if there was a driveway through there, every business along the Main Street, we'd want to have access to that driveway then.
Well, they would have to pay me for it because it would be my private property.
I know. But I've heard, I've heard that for years about.
Our, our, yeah, our long-term plan would be to have automated gates at either end. Certainly at the back end at Riffles Lane, you know, with a card access. That may not be feasible under our current construction budget, but down the line, that's something we'd like to, we'd like to be able to do. We would like to discourage through traffic through there. We don't want through traffic through there.
You have apartments along there too and.
Yeah, well, we know that there are apartments all the way along there, but you know, there, there's no, there is no access to the backs of those buildings from our lot. There's no reason for anyone who lives.
We don't want one.
How you gonna keep them out?
No offense, Ollie, neither do I.
How you gonna keep them out?
Well, there's no reason for them to use it because there are no, there are no back doors on.
Saturday nights, you know, and all that.
Well, that's why we're going to put gates up.
That's why that high fence is there now.
Yes, exactly. And I, and I'm sure that that's one of the reasons that that property has maintained its level of security is that, that big fence in the back, there's no, you can't get out that way, so there's no reason people try to go through.
Couple of years ago, so.
That's why it maintained that, what you're talking about.
Yes, yes, that's why nobody, nobody bothers it.
Couldn't get in there.
Right. So that's one of the reasons, I mean, it's not going to be just a little gate. We're, it'll be a, a full height solid gate so that when we close the gate at night, you know, like I said, except for registered guests and people with card access, you won't be able to get through.
We should look at this next month.
Yeah.
We just saw.
I do have a couple of questions for, for Ollie. But I think we can take those offline. If I'd like to have a chance to talk to you before we leave tonight, because there's a couple of things I'd, I'd like to talk to you about back at that corner. At Riffles Lane at the back of that house, there's a structure back there, it looks like a drainage structure. And you and I need to get together and talk about what that is. Yeah, so, but you know, obviously, you know, our, our intention is to be a, a good neighbor to everybody along there, including keeping the, our water on our property and not in the backs of your houses.
Thank you for this. Henry, is, is there funding in this, for this, from the city for revitalization of twenty downtown or something? Is there any, has he been notified of that or anything?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I spoke with Nancy about that.
Back to you then, Jim. Before we leave. Any status on forty-six and forty-eighth George Street? Remember, they came before us about splitting that house and subdividing that whole property. Did that fall through or is that just still on?
They have, I believe they have obtained a building permit to, to complete whatever additional work needed to be done. I think there were some water service aspects that needed, pardon me, that needed to be changed. Though, though there are two existing accounts, I don't know that there were two existing curb stops. So they, they've applied for, for a building permit for the, I guess, the demising wall that's in the attic for the, for the fire protection. And also to ensure that, that all the mechanical systems and fire or electrical and plumbing are all completely separated. So I'm not sure where, where in the process other than they pulled the permit. I don't know.
So they are moving forward with it?
Yeah. But I think there were, yeah, I think there were some mechanical systems issues that needed to be resolved before they're ready to bring the subdivision back to you guys.
Okay. And I guess my other thing for you is, has there been any request or comments or anything for a lounge or a restaurant type something on Monoccy Circle back in there? Does anybody apply for permits?
Really?
I heard rumor that, that there was something going on there and I just wondered, how come we haven't heard about it?
There is a, essentially a pending building permit for a finished basement in a house there that I'm waiting for. The, the person went and applied at the county before they came to see us. But I, I know the property that you're referring to and the homeowner does refer to it as a pub and, but.
It's more like a speakeasy. You don't talk about it, it's just there.
But essentially, it's, it's a, and, and I guess it's becoming more of a finished basement that, that they need to pull the county permits for to finish the basement and, and make everything legitimate. But it, it certainly.
Open to the public, going to be open to the public or?
Will not be a business.
Okay.
Maybe I didn't understand because you, the other day, I thought there were fines associated with that. It looks like there are on the permit application, but that's not really pertinent to the, the use or the plan.
Say unless they're coming from us, I don't.
So, so there's, there's somebody out there who's basically got a basement bar in their house and I, I don't know the whole story behind it, but, but I have received a building permit application for the property to finish the basement and they need to come in and get a zoning certificate to do that. But, you know, certainly when they do that, it will be made clear that, you know, that as a residential district, they can certainly throw parties or whatever they want to do, but they have to understand that they, you know, are not operating a.
Well, it came up through the liquor board too. Somebody on the liquor board, you know, said, I understand there's a private club out there. I said, well, that's residential, it can't be. And then they pointed me to a Facebook page that said, pri, I don't really, private club, something like that, that led them to believe it was a private club. And so, I mean, maybe this takes care of it, but otherwise, you know, we have to make sure that it is not a pri, it's not, can't be like a, I don't know, like the YMCA club out there, you know, it has to be somebody's basement, it can't be public. It causes a nuisance, so.
Okay. I was asked, so I wanted to, clarification.
In terms of, right, in terms of somebody coming saying, I want to open a business on Monoccy Circle. No, I, I think it's.
Okay.
I think it's somebody's basement bar has stirred up some.
All right. Jay, you're next.
Okay, we haven't had a lot of zoning things because we've been dealing with other stuff in the city. However, I know you have heard about chickens, right? And George's pig, we haven't forgot about that. And the latest this week has been bees.
Yes.
Bees what?
Bees.
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 People keeping bees in their backyard.
Okay, so I'm probably going to find, I like this subject matter less than signs, okay, and I don't like signs at all, so. The problem we have is, well, we all haven't discussed it, number one. Number two, nobody's really tasked me or anyone else to figure anything out and get to the bottom of it. A lot of people are rushing to the conclusion that we should do something zoning wise. And, you know, that we should create a zoning law, we need to pass a law. However, we regulate whatever we do here, because nobody wants George to have his pig, okay?
I don't know why.
So, I'm not convinced.
George.
Right. I am not convinced that that is the solution to this problem. That zoning is the way to deal with this if you want to deal with it. However, I don't want to cut the planning commission out because you all comment on zoning laws. So I just want you to be aware that there may be future discussions on animals, husbandry, animal wave, all that kind of stuff. And I can't imagine it's going to happen in the near future. It really needs to be researched. The bottom line is, these things probably can be regulated better through like a code type of situation than they can through zoning. And I won't go into all the details because I want to tip my hand on the, the reasons why, but zoning probably isn't as effective. So just keep your eyes open, that might happen in the next couple of months. I know that it's a buzzing issue right now.
Oh.
You like that?
I had been asked to check with MML.
Write it down. That's a mic drop, I'm out.
I was saying that I was asked to check with MML with regard to beekeeping. And that was last week and I'm not so sure they've stopped laughing yet, but I haven't heard back.
That's all I have. So that's not going to be something in the next month. The other thing I'm sure we'll get to eventually is put in your mind that the next meeting is on Memorial Day, right? So we need to figure something else out.
May twenty-ninth?
Oh, yes, my birthday the day before.
Okay, we'll talk, we'll get to that. All right, if I could, we'll come back to you, Henry.
If I can just go back to, to Jim about planning and zoning, you asked your question, I have another one. A porta-pot has shown up outside of a house. Is that allowed in the city?
Is there work going on at the house? Is there, you know?
I haven't been in the house, I don't know, but.
I've heard that, like a, where, where is it? I'll take.
Corner of Commerce and one ninety-four. The other day I drove past, there's a big blue porta-pot sitting right there.
I saw they got two back windows boarded up. They, they might be working in that.
It would be nice if they didn't have a porta-pot right next to the street.
When, when there's, when there's construction activity on a site, it, it's not that unusual for a porta-pot to be there while, while there's work going on.
Right.
So I'll, I'll, I'll take a look. For the house we talked about earlier on that property. So I'll take a look at them and find out what's going on.
Doing streetscape, I had one in front of my house.
Well, it's, it's, it's some, some contractors.
Was it from eight?
Will deliver a porta-pot to a job site.
I'm not saying they shouldn't have it, it's just, it's, maybe we shouldn't have to look at it from the road. Just, let's help the site of Tarnington look a little better than that.
That's how we combat them. Everybody gets a pot.
I'll take a look for it.
Okay.
Okay, next thing is Bobby. Mozer.
She brought a stack of papers.
I've been trying to watch a ballgame.
It's her autobiography.
I cannot believe. No, listening to you, I mean, how many years has it been?
Boy, they feel warm, they must just came off the press. Bobby? Really, just out of curiosity, when was the year that you stopped being our liaison? Is it, or has it been, or has it been that far that we just? Has it been up here or were we downstairs?
Downstairs.
We were downstairs.
Oh, downstairs.
Two thousand and seven, wasn't it?
It's pre-two thousand?
Yeah.
It was two thousand and six or seven, wasn't it?
Two thousand and one, maybe.
It's been a long time. That's.
Is that a bad memory?
It's what?
I said, "Would that be a bad memory?"
No. No, definitely not. Well, normally Scott Graff would be presenting this. He, um, normally works up, and, and again, this year worked up, uh, the draft of the annual report, but Scott has, as, as Jim explained, he's left the County Department of Planning, he's now with the County Department of Public Works. So he's doing entirely different things now. But he did, um, put together probably ninety-five percent of this, and Linda Eisenberg in my office is kind of finishing it up, since Scott is no longer with us. I don't know how much Scott has explained this from year to year to year to year, but I will briefly mention that the annual report is Maryland state law, which requires every planning commission in the state to develop an annual report for the prior calendar year. And the annual report is essentially a compilation of development, reporting of information on development activity that occurred during the prior calendar year, as well as planning-related information. So what I'm gonna, I'm, I'm basically giving you, uh, some homework to look this over. I believe, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, you probably were the, um, city staff person that provided most of the information to Scott. So it's been incorporated in this, um, document. And what I'd like all of you to do is to look it over. You are more than welcome to read it, uh, cover to cover. Mr. Wance, I know you weren't thrilled with the narrative on the water and sewer plan, but this document is riveting reading, so. If you do want to read the whole thing, please, please help yourself. But what I'm most interested in is to be sure that the information correctly reflects what happened in Tawny Town last year. I want to be sure that, um, the information we got from, from Jim is, is accurately reflected, that we're not missing anything. So I'm gonna be coming back in May. If you could let, uh, maybe Jim know, and Jim, you can pass the information on to me. If you do have any comments, any corrections, um, any thoughts on maybe anything we missed, if you can let Jim know maybe a week before the May meeting, and then I'll try to get the corrected information in the document. So when I come back to the May meeting, um, hopefully you'll be in, be in a position to, excuse me, approve the annual report, at least for the, the, um, Tawny Town portion of the information. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but, um, some of the information is reported for the county. Then we have tables that are specific to the towns. We have, um, maps where there's number coding between, uh, development, either in the county or in one of the municipalities, and you can see on the map where that's located. Some of the information, and again, this is required by the state, some of the information is aggregated and is reported, you know, what, uh, how much development activity happened within the priority funding areas, how much development activity occurred outside the priority funding areas. Same thing with the municipal growth area, designated growth areas, inside and outside. We also report on, for example, on page eight, we report on if any, if, if the county or any of the towns had changes to zoning text, the zoning code. Looking here, and I'm not see- oh. Ordnance twenty-six dash twenty sixteen, electronic message boards. Apparently, the city adopted something along relating to electronic message boards in twenty sixteen. So we, we got that. Amendments to PFAs, no changes were made in, in twenty sixteen. So just go through the document, and anything pertaining, that pertains directly to Tawny Town, please, uh, make sure that we put it in this document correctly.
This is good reading.
I'm sorry?
It's good reading.
Lots of numbers, some, some interesting maps.
What paid you on, George? Sorry, Bobby, go ahead.
That's about it, that's, that's, I'm really kind of introducing it, um, tonight, and, uh, give you approximately a month to look it over and get any, any thoughts, comments, changes, corrections to Jim, and Jim will pass that on to me. Do you all have any questions at this point? This is something we do every year, so it's, it's a little bit old hat at this point.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other business, um?
Second item, that was my first item.
Oh.
Scallops-
I've only got two, so, and, and this shouldn't, hopefully it won't take too long. I'm assuming that over the last year, you have been apprised of the fact that the county has been working on a countywide bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Nakomas Ford in our office is, is the lead planner on this. Probably the most recent milestone was back in March, uh, evening of March twenty-first, there was a citizen outreach meeting, uh, which had a pretty good turnout. We estimate we had about maybe six, um, fifty citizens that attended, and some of them filled out comment cards to give us their thoughts and their input. We didn't get any comment cards from, um, anyone specifically from Tawny Town, but we did get a comment card from someone who lives in Westminster, and to the question, "Are there any challenging, dangerous intersections you would like planning staff to be aware of? If so, please list them." This individual answered, "Maryland one forty to Tawny Town. Cars do not respect the intersections on this road, not only for bikes, but also other cars. More signage is needed to increase safety. Multiple deaths on this road due to speeding and not paying attention. Would like to see more bike pedestrian education and driving school. Needs to start with younger generation being more aware. Connecting with parks and rec, um, on creating safe routes between and at parks." So, I'm sorry I don't have a comment card from a Tawny Town resident, but this was the closest that we had.
Hi, Jim, I have bought, I'm not sure how you meant to call me, but I have bought two copies of the draft, Tawny Town Bike Ped Roots Map. It's kind of hard to see from the distance, I was thinking maybe I could give one copy to yours, too, if you'd want to, would that work? I'm gonna go ahead and give both of these to you all, by the way, if you want.
The mics, you don't want to see them.
No, I don't.
I am terrible reading that.
Is this the right side up?
Man, George, he rides a bike.
Again, this is draft, we have-
Again, this is a countywide bicycle pedestrian, uh, master plan, and we, but we want to be sure that the, to the extent that our municipalities have planned facilities, we want to include that in the overall plan. So we've, um, one of the things we focused on was to show existing facilities, so that map shows existing sidewalks, uh, existing trails. And I'm gonna come forward in, in a minute, but I just wanted to explain a few things. There, there are a couple of planned, um, trail connections, that I believe were added by Jim and Mr. Mitchell. Back in July of last year, July eleventh, I think it was, Scott Graff and probably Nakomas Ford and Claire Stewart in the planning office met with Jim and Bob Mitchell to go over ideas of, you know, what would you like us to show? Do you have any additional trails that you would like us to add to the map? We were careful that any kind of, of bike ped facilities that are, that are in the Tawny Town Comprehensive Plan are showing on that map. When you look at the comprehensive plan map, uh, there's a, a, I believe it's a purple line, shown as a bike trail, that kind of goes around, um, the stream and round the south, along the, I think, south and paralleling Baltimore Street. We're showing that as a red line. The red lines indicate, um, what's on a, either a sub, an approved subdivision plan or, um, included in an adopted comprehensive plan. The black dots indicate it's a bike trail. The white triangles indicate, um, pedestrian, and I think it's the asterisk that's bicycle and pedestrian.
So I believe, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, if I was not at that July meeting, but, um, Mr. Mitchell and Jim thought putting this, um, yes, bike ped, uh, the triangles, and this is indicated as blue, as a future connection, meaning that it's not shown on approved subdivision and it's not included in your adopted Tawny Town comp plan, but Jim and, and Mr. Mitchell thought it would, it would make sense to, and that these were good additions as far as being, uh, future bike ped trails. So that's this part here, and this one here. This was the, when you look at the comp plan, this is the purple line I'm talking about. Is, is shown on your comprehensive plan, so we're really made sure to include that. We're showing some approved, um, again, red line, bike ped, uh, triangles, showing on approved plans for-
Meats crossing.
Pilates meats crossing, right? Wanted to pick up on that, that you have an approved subdivision plan that shows bike ped, so. These, these kind of orange circles indicate where existing crosswalks, actual, actual painted crosswalks are on your roads. So I'm gonna leave this with you, if you have any-
What period of time does that cover? That map?
Well, existing is, is straightforward, as far, there's no set time on, like with your comprehensive plan, for example, there's no set date of, of where this, where this bike trail, like, might be constructed. I did have one question, and, and I spoke to Jim a little bit about it. Here's the, here's the bike trail on your comprehensive plan. This is showing as an existing trail in, um, Tawny Town Memorial Park, it's the green, it's bike ped. Then we have this plant, and Jim, do you know what that's, what plant that's coming from that's south of the Memorial Park? Showing a red meaning plant.
That's supposed to be an addition in Memorial Park.
So that's on like a site plan, or a-
Wow.
Not yet.
It was an idea, how about that?
Because what I'm, the reason I'm asking is, I'm not sure if this should be showing as red, or if it should be showing as blue. Because the blue is a future connection that's not on any approved or adopted plans.
Should be blue.
I think it should be blue, too.
It probably should be.
There's not a real plan, is there?
That probably should be.
And then we're show, we're also showing a bike ped, this red line coming up Frederick and York. Is that also, is that one coming through here? It's not in your comp plan, it's, it's, you know, it's following York, it's following 194. I'm just throwing that question, and I don't-
If that's a bike, um-
Well, the, the, the bike way is, is this path, is here, is, is the green, yeah. And the bike way, this, and, and this is information we got from State Highway Administration indicating their designated bike lanes along their state highways. So that's information straight from them.
And we have parking, though, how can that be a-
I can't believe they have a bike lane on 194 going to-
Is it really?
Yes, my understanding that State Highway is taking the freshman of their bike ways, and it's possible-
That could change, everything could change.
It's possible that it's gonna change. I want to be sure that whatever the State Highway bike ways alignments are, they were accurately reflecting them in the county.
Right, right.
So I'm gonna leave this, both copies with you. Please feel free to mark them up, I've already got in my mind that, that this should be a blue line, but anything else, um, that, that you have other ideas?
I prefer to raise that new grain they bought.
Well, they-
Do you have that on here?
Not enough on there.
I mean, that's, would be this area, I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't include the area that, that we require next to Ballinger Park, but, um, the trail does go up from Ballinger Park along Piney Creek. And that's, that's part of the, the trail that we've talked about off and on for a number of years, with the idea of tying together all of the city parks, um, on the, I guess, northwest area, kind of following Piney Creek, from the termination of Pump House Road, um, up to Ballinger Park, and then through Memorial Park and working through the middle school area, kind of incorporating the existing blacktop paths across there, and then going out to the library. Pretty much if you figure, you know, say a twelve-year-old in the summer, I want to go on my bike, and I want to go to a park, and I get there safely, I want to go to the library, you know, whatever.
And we are showing it as a bike trail, not a bike pedestrian, but that is, is supposed to be out of your, your, your comp plan, so that's why this is showing as a bike trail, as opposed to bike and pedestrian.
Bobby, do you have that electronically that you could email me?
This version? Yes, I can, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll shoot that.
That would be nice.
Sure.
That would be helpful. Yeah.
Absolutely. And I'm gonna be coming back, I'm not sure, we haven't decided yet.
Based on what you're on there.
Or if you're fine with the way you're saying it, corrections.
No way.
But we do want, again, the, the idea is, kind of what I thought was just in my-
Oh, did you see that?
The thing that I'm just telling, um, then, your towns, that we want to be sure that we're out, that the overall plan is, is to collect your proposed-
Right.
-facilities as well, we don't want to mess anybody.
Yeah, that sounds good. Roll her up. You want me to roll it up?
There's other bands.
Thanks.
Is that it, Bobby?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. Other business. Outdoor displays and activity in downtown business districts. You want to get started on that, or?
And I know there are some folks sitting here in the back that are interested in that topic.
Okay.
So we can start it, for sure.
There's no reason.
And, and I think this month, I, I don't know that we're gonna come up with any, any final plans or any final decisions, but I think hopefully we can get some input and at least get a direction that we want ahead. I don't think we're gonna come out with a, you know, a draft code amendment this evening. But we, knowing that we're under that state, temporary state of enforcement still, we need to get something happening before we get to the end of that again, and, and we want to scramble to do something. So, um, just to kind of refresh everybody, the language in the code currently talks about the downtown business district, and it lists all the different types of businesses you can do, but it says, "to be entirely conducted within a building." And that has been enforced at very, in various degrees over the years. We've, you know, typically allowed some limited displays or some limited outdoor uses, but then when there's been some abuse of that, there's been a crackdown, and then there are complaints, and we ease up, so we've kind of had the state of enforcement for, I guess, over a year now. And the idea being that we want to look at an opportunity, at some opportunities to allow merchants to have outdoor displays. There has been interest in allowing, um, outdoor seating for food service. And those, those are the primary things, and I know last month, Councilman Wance talked about the idea of working the drive-throughs in the downtown district as well. Same section of the code, a little different area.
Right.
But again, if we do make revisions to the code, it would probably make sense, if, if the consensus is, to make some change there, to do it at the same time, rather than have it, have it codified twice. So, um, so that's where we are, I know there's folks, um, here in the room tonight that, that have some thoughts on outdoor displays as well, so I'll turn over the room to you guys to get started.
Do you want to say anything first, before I ask from?
Oh, yeah, I think we, we shall have a chance to discuss before we open it up. I think for the most part, they've been responsible with their outdoor displays. There's been improvement from when we initially started allowing them. There are exceptions to that. I know there's a food issue at one of the stores. I think eggs are the issue. Did you mention that, Ali, last month?
Yeah, this week, so.
Okay. I think it's one thing we just need really- I think it's one thing we just need to be really careful of is what will be allowed and what restrictions we put on it. But I think at the very least, we need to start allowing these things actually codified and make it happen.
It's been a good thing.
It has been. It's been looking nice, except for the most part. You could nitpick, of course, but.
Have we set any clearance of how much space? I mean, doesn't the State Highway require a sidewalk now to be five feet? I mean, if we allow three feet for a display, does, is three feet enough to allow for a wheelchair?
Well, what are ADA's requirements on that? So it has to comply with ADA.
Five feet?
Five feet minimum.
Five feet.
Sidewalk.
So whatever they put out, there has to be at least five feet from the edge of the sidewalk to the objects. That's, that's the first rule has to happen.
And then again, my other thing I've noticed was, what do we do about Tuesday nights and
Wednesdays with garbage pickup?
Right.
Once those garbage cans, they take up a third of the sidewalk. So is any consideration, we need to think about some consideration for that Wednesday or whenever the pickup is. So maybe at this point, if someone from out there, from the floor would like to come up and make some comments, I mean, the more comments we hear, the more we can understand the needs and what you're trying to accomplish.
Hi, Justin Stoudinger, representing Rust. I don't know that I can really speak to your garbage on the Tuesday night, Wednesday morning, but I guess I'm just here to say, speaking for Rust, that we, we like sidewalk displays. There was certainly some criticism earlier. We took that to heart. And we have changed the way we do our displays. And so we, we are in full support and we hope that we can have responsible partnership with the city and the business owners.
Well, your site sets an example for.
Absolutely. I was going to say, your guys' displays are outstanding out there. Can't complain about that at all.
Well, we definitely have kept it to seasonal displays and things that just kind of add enhancement versus bringing out all of our merchandise to display. That was never the intent, because it's just frankly too much to pull in each night. But it's just a seasonal display and as people drive by to give an idea of what the store is and a sample of what there is, but certainly not to bring out storefront.
Out of curiosity, and I meant to ask you the other day, does anybody mess with your stuff?
Never.
You've never had a problem, right?
Never. We have, in the, over a year and a half, we have not a single thing touched.
Great, okay.
Yes, nothing.
You get very little of the kids downtown. They're actually better than what you think they are. I mean, really.
I know the kids are, I was thinking more about the adults.
I don't give anyone the benefit of the doubt.
He's got some cool stuff out there.
See, I think you guys should offer free seminars to the other business owners.
How to?
Get theirs right.
Okay. Yeah, no, I love it.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I haven't been able to keep my mouth shut all night, so why should I start now? You know, I would, would say, you know, one of the things, and I brought it up at the candidates forum the other night, you know, one of the things that this town desperately needs are, is a nice, some nice places to have dinner. And one of the things, one of the amenities that some restaurants use is to have a little bit of outdoor seating. You have 10-foot wide sidewalks here. You can't put very much of a table, but a two-top table could certainly be sat on the sidewalk. And, and I think that that's a good thing, you know, if you can't, if you tell restaurateurs that, no, you can't put anything out on the sidewalk, then that's obviously a turnoff to them. But I think if you can allow some minor seating, again, you know, having to maintain ADA access, which is, you know, a primary thing, and really just regular pedestrian access, you know, five feet. But if you've got 10 feet of sidewalk, you've got five feet of sidewalk you're not really doing anything with. So I would, I would like to see that allowed under the code. I mean, you've got, up at the corner up here, that would be a perfect spot, you know, if somebody were to open a restaurant in that, in that space where you would have tables outside, you're right there on the corner, you know, that's a, that's a big visual impact right there.
See, I don't think sidewalks are big enough there for that.
We may, maybe not, but I'm just, just off the top of my head. You know, I know that in front of 10 York Street, you know, there's 10 feet of sidewalk there. And I may want to put a table out there if people want to sit there and have their breakfast out, you know, out in the, in the open air. We may want an awning or something like that. So from my perspective, I would, I would follow along with them. I mean, obviously, anything that we would do would be tasteful in the same way. But I think that we would like to be able to do it under the code.
If I could just add in on, on the idea of outdoor seating for food service, certainly the first thing that comes to mind when you say that is, you know, tables and chairs out on the sidewalk. But I'll ask that everybody think, you know, beyond what we have right now, that, you know, there are sites in the downtown area that could lend themselves to, say, having a rear courtyard that could be a dining area or, you know, something like that, that it wouldn't necessarily be limited to the area between the storefront or the restaurant front and the street. So, you know, again, we're talking, you know, not, for the displays, yes, we're really talking predominantly on the sidewalks. But in terms of seating, it could be anywhere outdoor on the site that might lend itself to that, not, you know, just because there might not be much opportunity on the sidewalk doesn't mean that there might not be opportunity should some site convert to a commercial use, you know, or a restaurant that, that might have room for tables out back or something like that.
They could, to bid and breakfast.
Right, exactly.
They could have a patio out back.
Exactly.
Yeah, we're, we're not sure exactly what we're going out back yet with the cafeteria.
But, but again, just to not, not be focused solely on the sidewalks for the issue, that's all.
How about the, how about the issue with the front of the building, the road is also carried back?
Does both.
So actually, what are you looking forward to take back? What was the original ordinance that we put in for temporary?
Well, really, we didn't put anything in except to tell Jim to stop enforcing it.
Right, there wasn't.
We didn't, we set some suggestions for him to pass along, but we didn't give him any guidelines to actually enforce from because they weren't codified.
So now we want to create an ordinance?
Yep.
You did that, you justified it by saying, this is a trial basis. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
But what we really need to do, and we didn't want to do, because it was like a timing issue as well, because it was like right on the season or something, that you wouldn't have been able to drag it out and finish it. So now, the real way to do this so it protects everybody, because this is the rules and they'll stay that way, is we need to change the ordinance to allow these outdoor displays. And I believe that the council has asked you all to, to dig into it and figure out how to do it.
And the one thing that I noticed that's come up, come up, the, and I was going to say fire hazards as far as getting in and out of buildings, having doorways and areas that are, that are blocked by the stuff that they don't take back in. So do you, because I like the stuff that they leave out and it doesn't get in the way of their doorways, but when you've got stuff that's blocking a doorway?
Well, then again, when you go into those same shops, it's a fire hazard in the shop as well, so.
Right.
So then they should, situations like that then should be reported to?
Fire marshal.
Fire marshal or the fire chief, your local fire chief, let him handle it through the fire marshal, whatever.
Okay.
The way we've done this in the past, because it's too much to expect you all to come up and, you know, and write this, is that, may I hear that you kind of support the idea and you have some conditions and concerns that you want to address, that maybe we can do this in bullet point format first. That always works out best instead of trying to write the ordinance in text and then everybody has their opinion of this is what would be allowed, maybe these are some of the conditions. Then you guys can look at it, add some that we hadn't thought of, take some out, and then once we get, yeah, you're going in the right direction, we can write it up. This still takes, you know, several months to do even if we were ready to go. So the council's going to have to deal with the temporary stay and realize something's on the way.
Right.
List some do's and don'ts.
Okay.
Is that good?
So is that something you're going to bring back to us, Jim and?
Yes.
I see the head move, but Jim.
I jumped out of the way.
How about if we start with revisiting the guidelines that, that the group that sat down and talked about the outdoor displays? I'll, I'll get that to you guys next month or for your packet next month. So that, that might be a starting point that was, you know, we talked about, you know, stuff can't be over this tall, it can't stick out from the building, you know, more than so many feet. And if, and again, if we're talking about a zoning ordinance, you know, I know, I know we're concerned about how things look, but in terms of a zoning ordinance, you know, we're talking, you know, use, area, bulk, that kind of thing. So it would most likely be something where we're, you know, defining an area or something along those lines, you know, that, that could be used for the outdoor, in terms of the display, in terms of, you know, the sidewalk display, you know, that you have to maintain the certain clear space, that, you know, items can't exceed a certain height perhaps or, and I know in the guidelines, we talked about things that were really tall and need to be anchored at the top. And you really can't, I, I don't really see that as playing into an actual zoning ordinance. But, but that's where maybe language like, you know, you know, displays shall be, you know, erected in a safe, workmanlike manner, something like that, that kind of gives some catch-all language.
You just term safe and welfare stuff.
I mean, I think that what you should do, what our goal should be, is what Jim is saying, is what do you want to do? What do you want to see? Don't worry about how it fits into the code. Maybe the zoning is just going to define an area like he says. Because right now, under the zoning code, you can't do this. So you take that and you say, all right, we're going to define an area where this can be done. And maybe we pass some other section of the code that talks about regulations on sidewalks or sidewalk thing, because we have a whole section in the code that deals with sidewalks. So you don't have to worry about where it fits in or how to do it. You need to kind of give us guidance on the ideas of what you want and don't want.
That's all we need to start with.
Ma'am, do you have?
Yes. I'm Sharon Tillman, 10 York Street, George is on York. And I just have a point of clarification. Are we talking about just displays that go out and then at the end of business, they come back in? Or are we referring to things that may be permanent fixed structures such as a park bench or flowers, like planters, things like that, that would be a more of a permanent nature?
Merchandise?
Merchandise.
This is merchandise, yeah.
Saleable merchandise is what I was thinking.
Yeah, stuff that's being sold.
Like if you want a park bench in front of your building because you sell ice cream inside, I don't think that's the thing. I think it's the sidewalk sale.
Okay.
Issues.
All right, thank you.
Saleable merchandise.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on.
Moving on.
Anyone else from the floor have anything they want to bring before the commission? If not, George?
No, I don't have anything.
All right.
No, sir?
No.
Next meeting?
Wait a minute, before we jump to next meeting. Henry, this only goes up to 2014. Is there, is there one after that?
Uh, no.
That's what he's doing now.
So what are we doing?
Well, I'm currently working on the 25 year limit.
25?
Well, you see, the council made a decision that they didn't, you know, didn't want to do any more projects. Or actually, we've done, didn't have money to do this project. We still have projects left over in that one. We can't, we don't have that.
You don't have to worry about 25 years.
We know we would.
I'm sorry?
You don't have to worry about 25 years because they change inside of five.
Yeah, I won't be here.
No, you're, you're numbered. But anyway, so you're saying there is none?
That's still current.
This still current.
That's the most recent.
And that's what you're working off of, 2014.
If you want, I can modify that.
Just initial it.
Or redline it.
Redline it. I don't think we're working off of it.
When's the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't think there's any cap.
All right, George, you missed time.
It's the next meeting.
Next meeting is on a holiday, so do we want to do it on the 22nd?
Or the 30th.
Can you see?
No.
No what?
Not on the 30th.
I mean, because it is, the 21st is the fifth, fifth week, so we could do it on the 22nd, couldn't we? I mean, it would be.
Any reason why we can't do it on the 22nd?
No.
Keeps us on a Monday night. It's one, two, three, it's four weeks, five weeks, so. Okay, Jim, is that good? All righty. Does that suit everyone?
Suits me.
Anybody that doesn't suit? All right. Next meeting is May the 22nd. Henry, do you have anything?
No, no, no.
All right. That being the case, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.